No.
We're not ready yet.
We're ready now, I think we can start.
Okay, well, go ahead and call the meeting to order. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which this stands. Mayor Kim Harrison Edwards. Councilwoman Sherry Rogers here, Councilwoman Randy Bowen. Councilwoman Debbie Gump, Councilwoman Herb Curtis, excuse. City mayors, city manager Nate Stansberry. City Attorney Brian Bailey.
Here.
Finance Director Suzie Johnston.
Here.
Intern chief Mike Posey. Chief Jimmy Settle. Building code zoning enforcement Officer Marty Lewis. Street Commissioner Mike Sterrett. The sanitary director Nate Evans.
Randy, can you hear us? You're muted, we can't hear you.
Okay, do we have any publics on that? No. Old business ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh two for fifteen mile per hour speed limit on Summit Street. This would be the second reading, so I'm gonna take a motion to have the second reading.
Do we correct the numbers on those?
Yes. Of the ordinance by title only.
I'm moved to have the second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three oh two. By title only, creating fifteen mile per hour speed limit on Summit Street.
I'll second. By title only.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh two ordinance of the city of Weston, creating fifteen mile per hour speed limit on Summit Street. By title only. Second reading.
I'm moved to accept the second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three oh two by title only, creating a fifteen mile per hour speed limit on Summit Street.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Next ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh three. Creating a fifteen mile per hour speed limit on Cottage Avenue, this would be the second reading. So we're looking to take action on adding the second reading.
I'll move to have the second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three oh three. Creating a fifteen mile an hour speed limit on Cottage Avenue by title only.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh three, an ordinance of the city of Weston, creating fifteen mile per hour speed limit on Cottage Street, second reading by title only.
I'll move to approve the second reading by title only of ordinance twenty twenty-three oh three, second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Now we're down to review and confirm updates to city code. Mr. Bailey.
All right. Well, the package you all have, I think is hopefully chapter thirty-five through thirty-nine. And again, most of it. I don't know most of it, but a lot of it is just kind of filling, filling in. Changes where we, where we use mayor instead of city manager type stuff. I thought we did fine on the last time, just kind of one page by page or making comments. However, you all want to do it that way, it's not me.
Hello. I have a connection finally.
Well, we're glad.
I've been listening.
But it's okay, we have.
Well, if he were a post, he would.
Okay, so are we looking at page three where? Where you have. Alterations in that.
Operations are in red and all is red with parentheses around them, I sometimes forget to put parentheses. Then the strike through is. Language, I think, doesn't apply or. Or has some legal basis for not being in there.
My biggest, my biggest, I guess, is just like a frame of reference thing. All regularly employed police officers in the city who qualify as a police service. Act, Civil Service Act, we've got a chief and deputy chief that are not civil service currently. So. That we need to qualify that, say all police officers, including those not in the police civil service act or. And I think the other, the other officer are going to be regularly employed. There's just a distinction there between our offering, I don't know that, embedded.
For this one, this particular section, I think is. Dealing with sick pay or sick days or whatever. Now. The. Civil Service Act, I think, specifically gives them, gives police officers that one sick day per month or whatever that number is.
And the reason we're putting it in there is because Western Dakota requires that, that's right, for the civil service.
You know, if you don't put, if you don't put the chief and the assistant chief in there, because they're not civil service. Sounds to me like, or seems to me like you can give them more than twelve days or less than twelve days for whatever you want to do with.
Is this a minimum requirement from West Virginia Code or is this, they're, they're not going to get one day no matter what the city policy is?
Their time served. Yeah. According to the.
My guess is it's a minimum, yeah, at least since our civil service are gonna get the day. Right, you can't say, say we're gonna burn half of the day, a month or something.
I don't stay with so many hours. That it relays.
Right, this is.
So a day is actually. Pretty good though.
Yeah, it's relative for these guys, and a day for them is ten hours work right now, or four, or ten shifts of day.
Right.
Where really they're only getting eight hours because that's a day. That's what they're getting right now, uh, sitting on kosher.
When it comes down to, and they have forty days of their pay, but it all works.
It's just that they may not get enough, they don't approve, they can't take a full day off, right, from that month.
Are we waiting on you?
Yeah. I'm rereading them, we just making it to clarify that. You guys okay with that?
I think you're allowed, I mean, I think you can have.
Well, I don't know if we need to change the language a little bit, so let's say council feeling really good, or can't get raised, or something like that, right? We don't want to shut up the entitled, I mean, let's just say at a minimum, gotta be entitled to, to one day, if that's the language, way it reads.
To comma add a minimum comma one day.
That way change your, fucking change your code, do that.
Right.
At least either one day for West Virginia.
I was having a comment, a minimum.
And where you struck out B. And then you have your thoughts in green on the next page, I agree.
I'll talk to chief on that, and prior chiefs, and they're kind of on the same thoughts. I mean, I think you can walk down the street and scream because of police officer. Now, are you, are you disturbing the peace there? Just because you're, just because the police officer didn't be raided. I don't think, I don't think the city has a, has a, has a. Less stance to say, be nice to the police.
No.
Be courteous. That's why, that's why I.
Back in nineteen forty, nineteen fifty, it was.
Right. Things have changed in the last few years.
Have you guys noticed the language change? Some of the older ordinances, we don't understand what they're saying because our language has evolved. And the definitions have changed.
Use of the legal.
Exactly. Just going through this.
We're kind of, I feel like the old people, the old language is very.
They have a lot more words, yes, yes. Are we on page? Thirty-five oh eight looks good. Thirty-five oh nine, explain.
In the. In the. There was some kind of. I guess, charge. That indicated that when the police perform these various services. There's some kind of charge that can be done from that ordinance, there was an ordinance passed in ninety-three about that, so I guess it's not in the code. Or not in seventy-two. And these fees were, I guess, based on nineteen ninety-three dollars. I'll talk to chief about it and. I don't know what percent of our days or what percent of our time is spent providing these services. I guess it's like anything else, if we do, we. Can get recompensed for it. Taking it out, I mean, this takes away a twenty dollar fee here and there.
Are we doing this now?
Not really. Something I'm.
Are you charging twenty dollars for attaching a lien? With person?
We just charged the cost of the lien, say costs us eleven dollars and twenty-five cents for whatever it is.
Twenty-four dollars and then we get it back. I, but I don't.
We don't get lease.
No, we don't. Your judge?
Well, they should.
They get paid their wage, you know, correct?
What's that?
For taking a prisoner, I mean, they're in our, they're in our. So we don't have to worry about mileage. But. I mean, our.
Our police department can see reimbursement if they're going that, right, that's, that's the idea here is that.
This is a city can see.
From the prisoner.
Yeah.
I understand.
I don't know, how's that work, I guess municipal court will, we present that invoice part, that part of their judgment.
Okay.
Yeah.
It shouldn't be twenty-five cents.
That's probably the mileage in ninety-three.
Sixty-two, yes.
You know, change that to sixty-two.
Whatever the IRS rate is.
Can that be changed to current IRS rate?
Yes.
Oh, that's like, instead of assigning it a dollar amount, just like current. Dollar rate, and then that way, will it change?
You don't have changes.
Changes, yeah. About the rest of it.
I mean, I don't know what twenty, I mean, what's twenty dollars now, fifty, forty, hundred?
Can we just leave this as a placeholder?
Okay.
We're not charging these right now, I mean, I think, I think we discussed the last meeting about. You know, coming up with our own B schedule sheet, instead of having all these stuck in these random places and say.
Okay.
Let's start referring to municipal fee service sheet, that'll be the race. And we can make that language.
That makes sense.
That's way forward. Than in baiting all this right now.
So under this section, you're just gonna reference our fee schedule?
Right, we don't have right now, I think we leave this for the time being, but at a later date, we get this kind of ratified. We need to go in here and pull out and make a fee schedule and then update those fees. And then we go back and change our code to make the reference that we scheduled.
Okay. Looks like we're down to page six.
I think it was there in there, thirty-five point two-two B, I think there was a play though. Firefighters needs to be police officers.
Okay.
Okay, we're on our page six.
Not anymore.
Page seven more.
Now we're coming up on some pages. That. Gave me some heartburn. From the standpoint of. Who? When we get into these civil defense and civil disorder type. Situations, if we'd ever get into one. Who? Who gets to take the reins and quote unquote be in control? And, and they, state could use these words, executive officer or governing body. Now. I mean, that's, that's clearly the governing body, that's council. Who's the executive officer? Mayor? Executive officer or council, in my opinion, but is it, is, is that the same thing as administrative authority, which is what a city manager is? That's a few pages away.
Right.
Okay.
We're getting here on page, that's what's coming up, that's, we're talking about the whole civil defense response.
I have been told by Agnes that if there is ever an emergency, we are required by law, us and the county commission and the mayor to all meet together. It was a nine-one-one call center where we would have to meet and coordinate.
If we're having it in our, in our jurisdiction in, in Weston.
It would still be.
And.
But we talked about updating the emergency.
When I, when I read civil defense organization. To me, that I envision something that occurs inside the city. That state law has given the city this ability to create a. Lack of a better word, a board. That decides or has some kind of input on how stuff is, how civil disorders are dealt with. Inside the state. Who can be on that board, well, I think that's up to. Up to the executive officer.
We just went through it with COVID.
But I mean, I read this, I mean, this was more a red non situation, wasn't it, than it was a. Emergency response.
I mean, I think it's.
When you're talking civil defense, I think you're talking war.
Yeah, if you look over here on one, it says right here. Um, preparation carrying out emergency other than military forces. And when it goes on to disaster caused by enemy attacks, sabotage, hostile action, or by fire, flood, earthquake, or other natural causes, so everything. I think I know why we're to meet those county commission because our E M S is counting.
If I can chime in for a second, too, part, part of this, when I went through that FEMA training and stuff too. This is all, we're supposed to be able to tie into the counties, ties into the region seven planning commission, that ties into the state. We all have to have a common plan. That, that interact and there's, I know Josh had been through specific training. Um, for, for hazard mitigation plans and that kind of stuff too.
And Marty's right, I think when you look. I have a copy recently acquired from the fire department of the county's plan from two thousand, I remember that came through. We're not really mentioned in it because I think at the time, we weren't working well with the county. We didn't go to the right meetings or whatever, and so, you know, Jane Lou has spoken to, Jane Lou's response team would report to the county, and this, this is not the Weston plan, this is the county's emergency plan. And I think when you look at the statute that's referenced, that gives the authority to make that plan. I think we have that same authority in the statute to make our own plan, and like Marty's thinking, I think. We're probably supposed to be having some meetings at some point, how do we integrate our plan and our response into whatever the county response is? And all, all that, you know, funnel back up the chains, and when the governor says go, the order comes down and it tripulates down through.
So it functions.
Yeah, but as far as us being required to be there. I think that that's necessarily the law.
Well, even these, even these different response teams. That, who's in charge of the specific team, you know, for, for. This hazard A that happens, maybe Nate's the guy to take the reins for that, maybe him.
Or the fire department's the guy.
Right, maybe Jimmy's the thing, if there's a massive fire in town or something, yeah. Right, so, so the boards may have different members and they may have different team leaders.
We have emerg, we have made that part, but. This to me is pretty antiquated, don't you think, if this is more. The Soviets are coming. More cracks in the air, right, you know.
Covers everything. It covers.
But I think we've got this provisions, I mean, with, with nine eleven, I think they've created this whole emergency response.
I think you have, the way I, the way I interpret this, is the, the law gives the city. The. Decree, lack of, decree some kind of civil defense board consisting of five people and an exec and a, and a director. Now. Those five people come up with whatever plans inside the city, however you want to deal with problems. And those. Those people that, that director have to cooperate with state. Agencies, state. Military, federal military type stuff, if you, if you do what these. Sections say. And. I don't know what to tell you, the thing that, that it makes you. Create this civil defense camps, city civil defense camps.
I have a question, so if. God forbid something would happen. When it comes back on it. Sitting here, who's gonna be on the line? In terms of say.
We are. Maybe it's been there, yeah.
You know what I'm saying, without saying it, because I got in trouble last time.
I think, I think when you. You tell the civil defense board, hey, you all here, we're, we're giving you all this authority to come up with. Whatever plans you think are foreseeable and what we can do about it and whatnot. And. You, you, it's, it's, it's kind of like you give your blessing to the executive, to the, I'm sorry, to the director. Of that civil defense camps, and if you don't want that director, you can replace him, if you don't like what they're doing, you can replace. But. I don't know if I mentioned your question or not. But there's, this, I mean, it's just a, it's just another, it's just another administrative body to deal with things than a city.
No, no, that we knew that. I think it's unnecessary as well, I think that internally, this city manager and staff, maybe with the help of council. Should come up with a disaster. Preparedness, uh, business continuity plan, where you know which departments respond to what, and have your contact numbers. But. The mayor is a member of the Lewis Uptown Emergency Planning Commission. And they deal with all of those things, so why would we want to create? Another one? They're from both counties.
Yeah. And I'm not in favor of creating it all, they take it that way, it's. Tremendous. Right, you know, you need some direction on what you're doing. And we're part of the county. I don't think answers all the questions that you're going to have in that situation, and I'm fully in agreement with you, I think we need some kind of. Emergency response, and I think when the nine eleven provisions came out, that, you know, our county has a plan from the justice of all that, I think that applies to us as well. That's, like you're saying, I think is exactly what we're, we need to develop that. At least say, hey, we're referring to the county for this instance, so we have that. And I, I'll tell you right now, when you get into that provision, there's a boarding committee, you have a point to be, to screw those rules the way it is.
Right, however, we are an entity that I think the civil defense board is council. Mayor.
According to this.
Well.
That's, I think. I think we're here and we don't want to strike it, so why don't we have this whole, oh yeah, Marty.
Well, I think, I, I think it's very important to help maintain our community service, our community service rating with FEMA. And especially with natural disasters, if we don't take these steps and have these type of boards and stuff, it can affect our, our ratings, it affects people's flood insurance or. Or any kind of disaster insurance, could be a tornado.
My point is. We know how difficult it is to get people to serve on boards, and the board should insist of. Council. And staff. The code of enforcement officer.
I don't think there's any, there are no limits, you can be on that. Civil Defense Council, other than. You have five, and only the maximum amount of the same political party. And they're going to be through the same political party on the council. We often point to whoever wants to.
Political party.
Although. We are nonpartisan.
I'd say table, and I'm not saying table, but I think we need to look at that emergency response or whatever it's called, provisions and see. Make that latest one applies more to us than civil. And if that's the case, extract this and replace it.
I do know, I do know this, that. We won't, the governor made that a state emergency. A year a while back. Someone in our street department was supposed to have been there twenty-four seven. Until. I'm made an emergency to, and I did not know that until after.
How'd you find that, I didn't know that.
I didn't know that either until. Baby girl. Until I came down, down to the state. The kid that told me that when I asked him that, someone has to be there. Well, has to be there to maintain the record. So I don't know.
For COVID, I don't know how that would.
Yeah, I don't think, but I just found that.
Yeah, wow.
I, I think that should have to be on a.
I think the governor declared that they'd say it right, say it right in the future, but I don't like the governor, it's that say. If Weston, you've got. I'm going to back, back down to our ministry.
When they can count their dispatch person, because that person.
Right.
We're on call, so that's.
What's our emergency front line, I don't know.
You have a plan?
I have a plan. We're skipping through all this civil board thing then.
In the civil, the fifth board, it's a little different in civil fifth orders, the different section, page fourteen.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's a long reading there.
I understand. We gotta stay quiet now, you know.
Thinking. This may be another table type issue. Thirty-seven point oh three, chief. Thirty seven point oh three chief. Uh, provisions, often them. The thirty seven point oh three section A, the prohibit. Prohibitor regulated possession on one's own premises and. Explosive firearms, ammunition, dangerous weapons. Prohibiting and regulating of the, of firearms probably is violent to the state law.
I would think so.
Now, I think you can, there's various. When the, when the governor declares a state of emergency, state law. Proclaim that he can't prohibit or regulate your possession of firearms. Now. I think if you could add the word unlawful before possession, that gives you. Some reasonable basis to. To. Seize, I guess. I don't know if that's the right word, but somebody's out causing mayhem in a, in a, in a civil disorder and they're. Doing something illegal with their weapon on their property. I don't know. That gives you, that gives you a, a way to, to access that weapon that that might be called a man.
Well, doesn't the police do that every day anyway?
No, I think so. I mean, and brought them, yeah. I think, but, but I think. This prohibit or regulate the possession of, I think you get a policeman that says, by golly, we want to go. A mile and a half away from where this civil disorder is happening and take old Billy Bubbs. Weapon off of him, because I can go on his premises to regulate the possession of his weapon. Even though he's not, even though he's not, I mean, not in a law, even though he is lawfully possessing that weapon.
But I'm more concerned about B than A. Yeah, yeah, I was thinking, somebody could get killed over that one.
Let me, let me try to match, let me try to match a, a state code a little bit.
Yeah. Yeah, and B, yeah.
Uh, these pretty, I hate to say clear.
I'll try to.
Why would they prohibit such things? Prohibition.
That would hold drunk drinking, do crazy things, I guess.
I mean, this is under a state emergency, right? Just when you're related to that, so.
That's when you need those things. Thirty years, that was ours.
But the other one's under C and E and. F. I think we're back to this first amendment type stuff, but if you're, if you're obstructing. If you're, if you're. If you're obstructing the, the. Acting, reasonable actions being taken, I think you can run the rest of it.
We is martial law.
We just said, watch the riots twenty twenty, right? Where, you know, if we set there, what, burn down cities, right? Because we couldn't obstruct their. First minute right.
No, you have the right to protest, you do not have the right.
Don't, don't disagree with you. We're across the country, we're.
This is the mayor, we need this type of. Language for enforcement when police officers.
We have.
Doing that anyway.
And I think when. This is, this is an extreme situation that I don't know if we'll ever get into it or it's hard to put our brain. But when. People are rioting in the streets and you, and you're the mayor and you say, by golly, please, we gotta get out there and stop these people, so. Get these people out of the way, they're marching or holding a vigil. I think you can do that by proclamation and the police go out there and stop. Well, under normal circumstances, the police would look out there and say, well, that's just a parade, I can't.
So if something becomes an endangerment to the people. Because of their actions during that time, then the mayor could.
Yeah.
At that time, we're in proclamation, to protect them. Yeah, if it's a tornado coming down the street. We need to get the people on the street, more or less, is that what, kind of, of the way.
I think you, you're, you're dystopian since there, right? Where the power is out, people want food and. They may be congregating, blocking reasonable emergency activities. You want this provision basically, so the mayor declared emergency. You can make them get out of the road, you can make them get off the sidewalk, if they're saying, I'm very, I'm standing here protesting until you. You know, give me some booty, like that's where you're picking them up and moving them out of the way because we've got to get our police fire out of the station. Seems like that.
Seems reasonable.
Seems reasonable, right? And it's what you're going to do anyways, but I think this is the law behind it.
Okay.
That's not right, am you?
So what page are we to now?
Seventeen.
It looks good to me. Eighteen, martial law.
Well, well, in all, in all seriousness, you have a mayor that said, by golly, we have emergency. And, and somebody needs to have a check on it. And I think that's council voting. My majority vote to overrule the mayor's declaration of emergency. That's what thirty seven point oh seven.
Thought that was to end it.
Yeah.
So if something happens, you just call the red phone to the governor and he'll appear. Then you can get federal funds. For so we.
The next couple pages I think are getting. We're into. General taxation. I didn't touch this very much, other than to strike out a couple of different things. I don't know how deep a can of worms this is. From what we're charging and. We want to do a wholesale revision of all this. And I think there's one, one, I think the last few, next bit from page twenty two on, I think are just. Little typo type. When we get to page twenty three, when we get to page twenty three.
No, I believe. Remember two dollars a month, straight pay. Did I remember the two dollars a month straight pay?
Oh yeah. The rabble street?
No, I was just saying the driver's license. Then they had a two dollar, you paid two dollars a month straight pay. You know, it's great, it's supposed to be paid in streets, so that's the last time they, before this time that they pay streets back.
We'll get to that here in a second.
The manager?
Yeah.
That's why I brought it up. Where is it?
Page twenty three. And we're there, aren't we?
Yeah, we're there.
I think our, our non-ministerial viewers. Engulfed all that and.
Oh, okay. That's when they combined it all.
Yeah. Well, I think I can be taken. Thirty eight point five, I can be taken.
But Susan's got a lot of makeup work to do.
Start tomorrow. Go down page twenty five. I'm skipping on thirty four, it's nothing.
Pages are, are good friends. We've got to take out a word or other amount of inappropriate findings.
Okay.
Trying to refresh my brains.
See. I'm looking at page thirty seven, payments, receipts, accountability. We may pass a law where we have to take all the payments. Now, by certain date. We have to offer March certain money, we have to take all of them that way, or we. Need to offer that option off. Offer that. Oh, so you can. Still take certified check, cashier's check.
Yeah.
Not a better share, not a personal check.
Yeah.
I guess that's what. That's what I'm saying, where's cash?
Not such a thing.
Impressive check. Or thank you, Drew.
What's, what's certified check?
And we, we get some.
We'll get you a check right next to it.
Oh, so maybe that's what they mean by a personal check.
So, no idea.
If we ever accepted a certificate of deposit. That might need to be taken out.
Right.
Yeah, and, and cash, right?
We do take money order, that's.
Yeah, and starting in March, we won't take your credit card.
So if they call in, there's no way to take their payment, they're really saying?
Uh, we're not, we're not supposed to do that in the moral account of, um. Security reasons with the. With that and stuff. Now they can come in and pay it like that, but not, we're not supposed to do.
We'll, we'll direct it to the online.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Nine year old lady on top of the hill who's spreading her credit card, she's gonna have to, you know, learn how to use the internet or come anywhere.
According to laws about us.
Yeah.
I'm on forty five. Page forty five.
I'm on forty three, I'm looking at Opera House Moving Picture Show, Godville.
Those are the days.
You're on what page? Forty three, operating amusements. Okay. They never know, it may make a comeback. All right.
And I don't see, I mean, the water, the water on that, you can gas to get it, but, but.
Different. Amusements. And that's kind of the goal, right?
Did you approach your station?
We sound like. That's right.
Or rap.
I'm on list of a page.
Just watching your answer, yeah, question. So say we have the fireman's festival and they have the miracle on those three. To me, those people. Unless you are a. Certified business, business. I don't, for that one day, I don't think they should have to get it.
I agree with that. We need to make it.
It's important, you're taking your people out, they won't. Yep. That's a council vote, I think.
Yeah.
Because those things are promoting the city.
Okay, I'm looking at. I'm seeing what you're gonna say.
I think we're talking about the code right now. I don't think we can entertain.
Oh, I thought it was in here, like exemptions, so. Or do you want to do it by? Yeah, remember when we waived it and we did it by. A council vote and we waived it. Make it one for.
That's not gonna help yours because they'll be back next weekend.
About when?
It'll be on my super commander of day, the other farmer's market game last night. And so. Using this example. Say they want to have a farmer's market in town. I think technically they should be getting a business license, right? And they should be paying B and O taxes. And to say, we're exempting for a one-time event, event, farmers market happens every Saturday from April to September.
But is that a cottage industry? So if that's a cottage industry, they are exempt of all lessons. It's like when I do my cupcakes, I'm exempt because that is a cottage industry.
You don't have to get a business license for that. Being a little all better than that, honestly. But, but that was.
There's little labels on there.
Right, right, so. And then does that exempt you from B and O tax?
Exemption from WOAT taxes. I mean, I'm, I'm pretty sure, yeah.
We've never heard that.
If I pulled all that up and looked at it, we talked about it, right? And I was meeting, you know, we talked about it.
Well, no, that's, that was fresh, I'm sorry, that's wrong about it, and say. That's a, I think it's interesting, they come back and the city have farmer partners. Plus figuring out. The regulation or gene, whatever it applies.
Does Brandon need to research that and with that is one of the exemptions? Or state, state code. The state code, I think.
What are we trying to exempt?
Like, when we have like the fireman's festival, like that's, you know. One day events.
Sunday events.
But for your purposes, it would be the farmer's market vendors.
One question. This was, yard sales has always been something that comes to mind, like, whether it's our rate, we're good at yard sales, I don't know. You know, there've been places I've been where people have tried to have a yard sale every week.
Why? I think it's one, one or two. I thought it was more than that yet, I wasn't.
So that was, and that's just, I think it pops up often.
Yeah, in the past, I think they have. Shut down. Somebody who was operating one every week, maybe out at the Eagles squad a long time ago. They used to have regular, people served, so, yeah. Somebody lost a chicken over there too, by the way.
So I think, you know, if you're looking at exemptions, maybe you should put a line in there, you say yard sales, but whatever that, match that up with whatever the rest of our code is too. We said, we're not gonna make it to get this play or pickaxe for yard sale. But if you're gonna have some.
Would that be?
Your whole business.
Would that be the same thing as? Um, if you're only gonna do. Like, if you're gonna only do repairs one day to your house. Cause you're gonna get into a bunch of stuff.
No, I think, I think you were very specific, if you're gonna give an exemption, that you're saying. Farmer's market, and you're saying street fair.
Yeah.
Yeah. Or approved events by the city, needing to be. This class.
And then we need to define, if we're going down that, or I think we need to find that.
Well, I agree, I agree. I was saying, I think you, you have some specificity to it, so. And when the council approves that event, they're making that. Appeal to that section of the code saying, yeah, we're giving them, they'll be based on. Very nine dot O six. Section E. That makes sense, Brad, what are you doing? If you're confident.
You, I mean, I, I want it to sound mean, y'all tell me what you want. What is in the lawsuit, the law can support you.
We wanted to look at the cottage industry. That part of West Virginia code.
Yeah. Michelle Carpenter has a business license, don't she? For banner bowls.
Probably, I don't.
But I think most that she's doing, she knows better than I do.
Right, now, I do know. There are certain things that she can sell, but certain things she cannot.
I guess the cottage footballs.
Yes, that pertains, yes. She explained that to me, or some things that she couldn't do, like for the state, right?
I think it's right.
Yeah, cheese.
And there's certain things, food that is.
Yes.
They're talking about farmer's market last night, their vegetables, like if they chop up a salad, they say they can't sell it. The farmer's market unless they have met all these other requirements. And so the farmer technically is just allowed to cut it out of the field and bring it.
Bring it in.
Technically, what they're saying, we're even just a wash it. So who's gonna buy a great piece of land, nobody. They feel clean at their. Everybody's rolling their eyes, they're talking about it, it's well-known, brought to states, the. Good luck, Brian, that's what I'm saying.
I'm sending the Senate bill to. Thank you. So we are integrating that. One day, that festivals and affairs.
But I think this is, this is accident, right, this isn't talking about business plan. All right.
I think they're, um, um.
Well, I mean, it's sort of our case, but I think you know, for business life, then.
They were kind to this thing, but. Thank you very. But I also think is, you know, especially if we're sponsoring things, yeah. Wanting people to come as vendors.
It's a difficult enough to get in here.
Yeah.
And it only benefits the city in the long.
We had a similar discussion at the municipal, a couple weeks ago, where we're talking about B and O taxes. Whether the city charges B and O taxes to contracts. So largely, it's like, well, we're not charged B and O tax to, for them doing work for the city. Right, and I'm on, I would do it, because you're making a development, it's gonna come back to you if you're paying for anyway.
Right.
But the Bridgeport City Manager had different. Time position or what it, they could pay it.
You know what they're gonna do, they're gonna put in their. Yeah, but then that's fair to all the contractors. The opportunity to do that. Ryan, are we doing on the code tonight?
I am, you are.
Yeah, sounds like you got it, you worked that out for you again.
That's what that purpose is about.
Okay. Well, thank you for everything you put together. City managers up there.
Well, I written down farmer's market, we can talk to you guys about that, we, uh, I was at the meeting last night, they had their initial kickoff for the season's meeting. Um, I was asked, Ashley Montgomery agreed to, hey, I think that they're maybe even building a little burning location. And I got there late, I had six o'clock written down and five o'clock. They'd already decided they were staying in the same place by the time I got there.
Oh, no.
Well.
That's at last, right?
Yeah, yeah, and so as they continue to talk, and I'm sitting there listening at this point. Uh, my sister was there and they kept talking about the problems they're having with their site, they were saying issues that pop up to you, and I think we're, I'm here, that we need to do site. And people were out there, shook their head and swelled and introduced themselves, confirmed late and. Um, so they've been here before, right, they've been here to the depot for me, they've been riverfront, they've been St. Pat's. And.
The senior center, they were there.
They've been there.
They did really well at St. Pat's.
I don't, yeah, and I don't know what their pros and cons of every location are, but I did offer. Yeah, the hub had been mentioned at one point in time, we talked about that one, and I offered the depot over here, so, you know, I think. We've got an awning, right, if you've got rain or inclement weather, whatever. Yeah, I said, I'm not trying to convince you to come in the city, but I'd love to have you, and I said, you know, I think we can offer traffic control, you know, if we need to shut down this, the road between Fishers. Here during Saturday morning, the decrease area or increased park, and I think that's something we could offer, that I can't. Promise it at this point, right, but that's, those are good things. So if we got to the thing where we bust at scenes and we need a police officer to. Uh, handle traffic where people cross the street, and maybe we can do something like that as well. Yeah, we have some electric here, I don't know about bathrooms, but. There's ways, I mean, there's deals that they made there, I guess. So it was left that, they were really interested in, you know, they were appreciative of the city offer. Uh, to have it back and the best, best offer they've had in long times. Uh, but, uh, they were gonna come do some measurements and stuff like that. And I also mentioned to them, I mean, I think they, they're talking about trying to find some kind of permanent location. I mentioned that with the riverfront project, that there's a possibility in the pavilion, pavilion, that, that. They have access to some farmer's market funds through grants and stuff, and maybe we get pavilion out of it. They keep that a spot, or redevelop riverfront park. And all a bunch of maybes and possibilities, but that's what was, was offering, I guess that means, so. Uh, another problem with them is having a market, farm market manager, say. In years past, one of the vendors is handling, which handles marketing and getting all measures lined up, reminders and stuff like that. Um, and so Bruce Lloyd was supposed to have a conversation with the county commission today during their budget talk or something. Say, you know, I think in Dodgers County, they, the commission there is giving the farmer markets some money to hire a person who does that work. It sounded like a whole lot of money, fifteen hundred bucks or something like that, it's kind of the number being about. But I did say, you know, see, Bruce definitely barked up that tree, but, uh, you know, we've got an American volunteer that perhaps could. Entertain that role, and I had that conversation with him today, and he's open to it, and I think it's the same for him, I want them. And I think the girl in Dodgers County, they were hoping part of her, again, that she would do both. So she's got a lot more experience, they sound afraid, it's pretty loud last night, so. She'd be a good person, but we may enter into some kind of force relationship there as well. And so that, Jacob has been working on this concert series, so we're very quickly gonna have to try to figure all this stuff out, but then, yeah, do we? We try to combine a concert series with the farmer's market, if we have that in town, that may be a possibility, do something like that. Do we, or do we have concert series and farmer's market, try to use some of those acts at the farmer's market, that more music and drive, gravel people, so.
Depends on the hours.
Exactly, yeah, the farmer's market last night, I think they set nine to twelve on Saturdays, but some of the people are, you know. Evening markets new wave better in other locations that they're at, so maybe it's a conversation for us, say. Around our concert series on Thursday night, you wanna have farmer's market during the concert series, right, get people there, so.
There's plenty of parking.
There's some of that, yeah, so, we'll see, yeah, they're kind of against grass because it rains and everybody gets muddy, so they may not like it because of that, so. I think it's just trying to have those conversations with all these different groups. See if we can not work separately, but work together in some capacity to make it there and better. Uh, so there's that, I mean, we're just continuing, it just seems like every day something else pops up. Uh, I said, working a lot with Jacob, building some relationships, he's got a marble, uh. Line out for Marvel, Marvel tournament, and working with class, because then they can have a Marvel tournament, since they have to do an actual tournament. And we're starting to work on a car festival a little bit, um, on the concert series, obviously. And then all that J L C stuff, that he's staying busy there. And we're continuing to work here on, and first you fire, first you miss will be all that stuff, I've gotta get that wrapped up. Hopefully something directed to you next week, my, my plan of working for code application, but. Uh, but we just quicker filling up, but, uh, that's about all I have this point, I don't know.
Parks meeting Friday.
If we do, so.
Is it okay to invite the commission to that meeting? If we're here to discuss the Mary Conrad.
So, Agent.
I don't even have.
And Mary Conrad. That discussion.
I, I don't know where we're at, I'm just the last meeting, but I don't know where we're at, but I was kind of the impression that it was done, but. I don't know, for waiting for me to get back to, put the file on the box on or what, so.
I think they were wanting to have a conversation with the county or the director of the Lewis County Park, they were hoping that. That somebody would, and in the meantime, um. Brad said he would be interested in coming to see exactly what. The core is wanting, and to see if the county can partner with the city somehow. He was just interested in hearing about it.
I mean, I think you're welcome, you can come as much as you want, there's just nothing, at this point, it's not great, I think it'll just be a session of throwing ideas at the wall and kind of talking what we're thinking about. See if there's any synergy there, work together. I think it's ultimately, my intention was the parks, if we went into some kind of relationship, and I say we, and I'm not in the parks board, right, so. Trying to set parks board to be its own entity or whatever, you know, commission. And our own power and revenue and all that stuff, so. Odd is that they would use that park to. Generate revenue and manage, and the city would try to support that best we could, whatever, we felt what we did, the hope, the hope that at some point. Those things can run self-sustained or that stuff can pop in, so. Those are my initial thoughts.
I know, in the past, it, yeah, that park has been a real issue for those who have maintained it in the past, so that's why it's available now.
Right.
And the huge thing is the mowing. And as you know, how difficult it is to get off like this tomorrow.
Right.
And we're just, and, um.
And that plays into my, he's having a conversation, right?
Meeting with the. With him and the, uh. Uh, about the mowing and stuff, the dams, and in turn, we're hoping to try to get vent drag out of it, and. So there's some things working there.
Our thought was if they purchased some vent drag, we've known the dams that put the old grid bins. And put some kind of, a better agreement than what we have with American Water, we bought Skid steer and we just holes the road. Um, but something, some kind of defined relationship, but then we had, we could do a little break on ourselves, instead of contracting that out for a hundred thousand dollars. And that would also give you a bigger machine that if you do a very contract, perhaps that's a little more efficient for us to go over it, no, vent track.
Thinking what we're trying to get, like, implemented.
I was gonna say that, it was gonna, it would entail additional manpower at the street department because. That's their busy season with. Everything else that they do with the city.
That, that's, all this is being considered all at the same time, right, cause Marty, didn't we look at the mowing? Muddies last night, we were at fifteen thousand plus, all right, just mowing lots, and we're like, you know. We didn't spend that on boat tents last year, so did we buy a tent and we get two mowing tents and mow though all summer long and. Yeah, yeah, I mean.
Yes. I can keep them busy.
Look, if you're looking at that, Nate and I looked at it today, or, I'm sorry, last week. After two years, we could, we could.
How much is a vent track?
About thirty grand.
Well, we, and I'm hoping, we're gonna, we'll entertain those, but you can buy a vent track that has a cab or a cattle attached, that has heat. We can put a, a broom on the front of it, sweep the sidewalks, that was not thought we had, to put a compact around that, brush the snow off the sidewalk.
That'd be cool.
We'll get back with you on, I'm not very sure how.
Still Mike's under there, that's right, Mike.
No, no, you're fine, uh, I'm not very sure exactly on those, on those things that are dams, and some of them, we only have the mobile street. And when you add load twice, so, and look at this, it's might be a good situation.
Where are the upper, the water that prepares this year, because this has been years and years.
I've been trying to.
If I knew it, it would hurt that more, I saw it down, that issue as well.
That was before.
I don't think they're coming after us for patching at this point, but. There's, they don't have a clear idea, we've had a clear idea the last time, spoken about.
So we don't know when that begins, what year.
No, Tyler at one point put a report together, had some, I, he kind of went back there and checked the patches, and we were. We still had multiple years that, if we were at the same rate, we'd do that before. I'm not sure they're even commu- communicating with us real well anymore about the patching.
They're not, but then let me throw this out there, is some of their, their administration up there?
Jason, who was there previously, I've been here, he didn't know very much about it, and so now he's now moved on. So I'm sure the new guy doesn't know anything about it.
No, I know contracts, not in my. Their own properties in terms of painting, because the water towers.
I reached out to. The, the new guy, supposed to get back to me about the property of the dam, it's been some minute, they had met with the mayor and I a month, couple months ago. Offered some kind of term to supply the dam, only because we said other things. Uh, but. Yeah. But they on both sides of the dam, and there, there may be your, if we're in the riverfront project, where something's gonna have to happen there.
Right.
So I'm not quote, closing the door or something there, but they were supposed to be giving us some more information and. Then that's kind of fruition, so I just actually emailed him this past week and said, hey, you know, it's New Year, what's going on, he said he was meeting this week. With his people, whenever French pointed it, I heard that before. I'll try to ask him about that.
Let's say, back door, oh my gosh. Nine eleven, they put that green park around, do you remember that? Because they were prepared, cares that, well, that green park was yours. Now, you said, oh, you have. Okay.
That's exciting about that.
Thank you. Our next meeting, Dave.
You want to draw the twenty, what is, what is next?
Twenty thirty.
Twenty third? You want to take, you want to take a break?
Judy, what do you want to do, I'm gonna ask you guys, if you guys are here all day, what do you want to do? I think let's do it, get it over with, okay, sorry.
It's why we're here at the Miss My House right now, so.
January twenty-third, really, inferno system, okay.
Everybody put their socks on, it's sixty degrees, we're here all night, we'll not do.
Okay, motion to adjourn. Do you ever say aye?
Aye.
Aye, Randy.
How are you all? Good talking with you all.